Everyone, calling the meeting to order.
Roll call for the city council meeting of July 5th, 2023 at 9:00 a.m. Ms. Flores, Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Mr. Keith, Mr. Troup, Mr. Witherspoon. Stand for a moment of silence and pledge.
Moment of silence, please. Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you today, first of all, grateful and thankful that you allowed us to assemble in these chambers today. We ask that the power of your spirit, you help us to make good and prudent decisions on behalf of the city and its residents. We ask for you to also look on those who are bereaved and those who are in extreme need. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Like to accept the minutes of the June 21st, 2023 city council meeting and bills for payment on July 7th and July 14th. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Ms. Flores, Mr. Keith, Mr. Troup, Mr. Witherspoon. Mr. Nelson is absent today.
We have no presentations this morning, so we will go to repository sales.
I have a question on that. I should have asked back there, but ran out of time. Why are we allowing people to buy in bulk? You know, same people are buying 12, 14, 20 properties at a time. Is there a reason for that to let?
There was a submitted request, and I think from that entity. They came before council, but they made a request to purchase 20 properties.
I remember those days.
And this is 17 of those 20. In terms of why are you allowing it? I mean, these are properties that have not been purchased at tax sale or the tax-free, the lien-free tax sale. And now we're just sitting in the county repository with with no buyers. So the reason you would approve it is the state frowns on having property sit vacant and not attended to. This is the only entity that has sought to purchase those 17 parcels.
Might be a good point to start talking about the land value tax that Mr. Nelson's talked about in the past.
I know that Ed has had conversations about possibly increasing the the fee for for it. So I know they're they're trying to do something.
I had, you always hear stories, but one of them is that they buy these properties and then they use those properties as equity for loans. These are big companies doing this. I just want to make sure we don't get caught with our pants down, so to speak.
Well, I mean, as my role isn't to give suggestions, but perhaps, I mean, one of the things that seems to be lacking with repository sales, and it's not just at the city, it's at every municipality throughout the county, is that nobody pays attention to the properties that are sitting there. And oftentimes, people might have a vacant property right next to their own house. They have no idea that they could purchase it for 250 bucks. But the reality is that, you know, some of these companies are a little slicker and they go nationwide and buy them. But they're sitting here and no one is using them, no one is buying them, no one's paying taxes on them, and they're just sitting rotting away. And with these parcels, these are the only, this is the only entity that sought to buy any of those parcels. And so it's.
That's not true. All the entity is integrated in various properties. That's not true.
All right, well, we're gonna have a moment for people to speak on a repository sale right after Ed's done with his comments. You're done, Ed?
Yeah.
Alrighty. If there is anyone to speak on repository sales, now is your time. Oh, hold on. Michael, Councilman Michael Keith has a comment.
So to further with the attorney said, you know, these, the repositories, properties are on the Erie County website. And so if you have a vacant property next to yours, or if you know of a space that you would like to own and put back into a private usage, go to the county website and look under repository sales because it's a benefit that somebody here who lives here and works here to have these properties as opposed to a national corporation. You know, I believe that, you know, with the rise in property values, just in general, that, you know, these national companies are being opportunistic. And, you know, what we don't want is that all of them go for $250 and then, you know, then next week, they're $10,000 to our residents who are trying to become first-time home buyers.
Anyone else? Alrighty, if you have any comments and you would like to speak on repository sales, now is your time.
Yes, hello. My name is Corey Harris. I'm a city of Erie resident for over 40, 50 years. I contacted someone in the department, vacant lot department regarding a property on 28th Street. And they said they already cut the check for the double-licensing company and the property would be torn down and be sold for property tax that's owed. And I was trying, and I was, I'm here to try to petition that the check be reimbursed and not to pay the demolition of the property is still up because I'm willing to purchase that property as is and do some great things on that property. So, but he said the guy already got the check, but this building's still up. I want to know how that process works, where I could petition a hold or a stay on this property on 28th Street on East Side of Town.
You have the exact address?
I do here on my phone. I can give it to you in a second.
Yeah, if you can leave that with us.
Yeah, yeah, but I'm also interested in purchasing Shannon Road property on Shannon Road for a development project that I'm looking to launch here in Erie County. That's gonna be a $50 million project in the state of Pennsylvania. So this $50 million project would expand to 50 states. It's a $2.5 billion project statewide. It's called a new football league cryptocurrency salaries. All professional, 2,700 professional athletes' salaries would be implemented. But this is a launch out of Erie County, and it's been in the works for some time. But now, this, since everything has fallen in place, we're ready to launch and start to set up some people to serve on our board so that this redevelopment project can work in a collaboration. Over the years, I haven't had much luck of working with Erie County leaders, economic city, economic development, mayor, governor, state reps, congress, all these guys. For over 20 years, I worked with them. I got nowhere. But I'm willing to try to implement you guys on some new AI technology. A lot of this stuff that you guys are collaborating with other entities like aerospace companies here, GE. I worked for these companies for quite some time as an aerospace engineer, press operator, metal finisher specialized. So I'm starting my own bonding company. So I'd be in aerospace, bonding, metal finishing, different alloys, implementing those things, getting various procurement contracts. So that's where we at on this, on my project. That's why I'm here. Try to be a candidate to come in and purchase all your vacant product, properties, put businesses on there so that we can eliminate poverty and generate generational wealth in Erie County.
Mr. Harris, so this is solely about a repository sales and if you have a specific one.
Shannon Road, Shannon Road.
So earlier, when I talked about the process of looking through there, finding it and submitting the application, everyone has to go through that part of the process. After repository sales, we will have public comment where you can get up and talk about your other projects.
Alright, that's cool. I got two property locations that I give you today that I'm interested in. And Sherry Bowers have all the information for that. That's why I want to work with someone from here because when I approach those individuals, they don't think I'm serious. So I want to be able to have someone from this to.
Yeah, so if they are in the repository, you have to submit it to the county. Right now, there are properties at the land bank and probably at the redevelopment in which you would have to approach those entities if they are owners of the said properties. And so that would be the process.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Flores?
Yes, go ahead.
I just want to make sure everybody understands, we're talking about two properties here. The property in Shannon Road is not located in the city. If it is on the repository list, the process to go through would be to go to Harbor Creek Township, I believe. So if Penn State Baron owns that property, then that's not a repository list and the city can't, no matter what a great project it may be, the city can't assist in that in any way with the property that you've referenced, and I don't know the specifics. But if it's being torn down, it's probably being done by the redevelopment authority. I'm not certain of that, but there's still an owner of that property. The only way you can acquire property for the $250 is if it is in the repository sale bin. And I doubt, since they're tearing down property, there's probably an owner. So the, both of these properties, no matter how good the project is, probably don't fit under the umbrella of repository sales.
Thank you, Ed. Is there anyone else who is here to speak on repository sales? Is there anyone else here to speak on repository sales? Going for the good of the order, is there anyone else here for repository sales? Alrighty, thank you. If no, we are moving on to public comments. If you have a public comment, please clearly state your name for the record. You have five minutes and you can stand at the podium.
Let them know they have to stop at 9:30.
Yes, and we will be stopping at 9:30 for our public hearing, but we will resume the public comments right after the hearing. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Cole Shenley. I live at 615 Ohio Street. I'm here today to speak about Councilwoman Faulkner's potential ordinance on making Erie a sanctuary city for the LGBTQ+ community. I just want to speak in favor of such an ordinance. We live in a time where the LGBT community is consistently under attack and in physical danger even from a variety of right-wing forces. You can see in the state of Pennsylvania, we just had to deal with in this city of Philadelphia, the right-wing group Moms for Liberty that took over the city for several days for their convention. And there was a lot of protesting and it was a pretty ugly scene. We just had a really great event here in Erie with Pride, the Pride Parade and everything like that. I took part in that as part of my role as a board member for Trans Family of Erie, Pennsylvania. We do a trans support group every month. And I just want to say that this is a sort of a long overdue thing. We live in a time when trans people in particular, in the LGBT community, are under attack and harassed. We see young people that are coming out as trans, try to be forced back into the closet or, you know, bullied and harassed. We see states like Florida, like really push, you know, restrictive or restrictive laws and things like that. So I'd love it if the city of Erie were to be able to be more welcoming and make sure that, you know, if somebody from another state or from another part of the county were to come here and look for shelter and look for security as part of the LGBT community, that the city would not, you know, impede on their ability to be here. I'm not sure about the specifics of the ordinance yet. I haven't seen it in particular. But I know in other ordinances, it speaks to the ability for like the local law enforcement to make it a very, very low priority to, you know, engage in, you know, harassment. Not that they would harass people, but, you know, make sure that the LGBT community was, you know, people were like, running, you know, on the run from, you know, an abusive situation or whatever, that they're not pulling their back into it or something like that due to whatever laws in another state. So I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning. I am the very Reverend Melinda Hall. I live at 303 Madison Avenue, 16505. I serve the Episcopal Cathedral of St. Paul at 134 West 7th. I also rise in support of the ordinance to declare Erie a sanctuary city for the LGBTQ+ community. I find that to be consistent with the work Erie has already done. Our score on the Municipal Equality Index indicates the work that this city has done to become a welcoming place for all people. It's also consistent with our status as a welcoming city for refugees and new Americans that would continue our tradition here of inclusivity and valuing all people. I also find it consistent with the number of folks who identify as queer that do live in this city. The growth over Pride in the past couple of years has demonstrated how many folks call Erie their home. And of course, those who show up for Pride are only a small percentage of all the folks who identify in that way. Also, if we name ourselves and pass an ordinance as a sanctuary city, we determine that that is a set of values for the city of Erie. It allows us to have more conversations about things that are not consistent with those values. I don't think I need to go into detail, but the latest sort of issue happening at the public library related to the removal of the children's display and about Pride would seem inconsistent with who we want to be as a city. And having an ordinance that really names our values would help us have conversations about how we holistically employ that value in our city. I hope that I am not alone in believing that Erie should be a city for everyone, committed to the rights and dignity and absolute worth of all of our future and current residents. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello again. My name is Corey Harris. I live at 965 East 31st Street, Erie, PA. I run a remote business from this location, about nine entities remotely. I hold as the commissioner and the legal commissioner of the agency Citizen Review Board of Volunteers. It's a Pennsylvania state corporation, professional corporation. And our business has been hit with several thefts, property thefts. We run a rental car business for city of Erie workers to help senior citizens. I provide service for people to get to and from work so they can service disabled clients. So I rent them out of vehicle on a contract basis. And some of these times, we don't get our vehicles back and the vehicle become unauthorized and a contract breached. So it becomes civil. So a lot of times, I don't want to do that because people have families and kids and I want their life hard. But at some point in time, I have to do what I have to do. And I experienced that in the last week or two with the city police over the last couple of days here. I had to make several calls to the city police department to take time from various serious crimes. So furthermore, the police department really do a good job. But some officers, because I'm a minority business owner, they don't take my business serious. And a lot of times, I approach these individuals on a theft of some rare lucrative property, damaged, you know, cars, automobiles. And they have it as if the vehicle, well, there was a mix-up over the weekend that my vehicle was recovering and it wasn't. I had to take action on my own. I found both of my vehicles this weekend. So I went, I'm from Erie. I grew up here. I know where to go. Went from one side of town, hit every corner, found my vehicles, both of them. So the police, I called the police. I pulled up on the suspect, suspect. Detective Clement said, don't rush up. Call me. Call them. I called the police. Police didn't do anything, let the female walk away. And I said, they told me to call. There she go. I got all this evidence that I'm gonna check upstairs to the police in the car. But things like that is what I'm here for because I'm pissed and I came down this morning. My wife is here in the audience. She witnessed this event. She witnessed the lady come to the residence, make the transaction in the car. And she lied to the police officer and said she didn't do it. It wasn't her, this and that. So my wife is here to verify that. I have all the information, phones, all the. So I'm here to say, what can we do better as an, as minority business owners, you know, trying to work in collaboration with the city police department? That I don't need no one looking the other way, you know? So I'm here to say equal justice for equal residents would be great for the city of Erie on the east side. And various potholes is on 965 East 31st, tremendous car damage. If you guys take up there, I got photos of the potholes. If we can do better with paving on the east side, it'd be great. Thank you and keep up the good work, guys. You'll be hearing more from me in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Thank you, Ed.
All right. Good morning. My name is Savannah Jacobowski and I live at 3924 Walker Boulevard. I'm here today to speak in support of Councilwoman Faulkner's soon-to-be-proposed ordinance making the city of Erie a sanctuary city for the LGBTQ+ community. A little bit about me, so I am not a lifelong Eriite. I just moved here about five years, five years ago from Crawford County. I'm originally from Linesville. Now, as a queer woman living in Crawford County, I myself faced a fair amount of persecution. The town that I'm from, Linesville, has 2,000 people and eight churches. The stigmatization of the LGBTQ community is quite real. In addition to that, my parents were teachers at Penn Crest. I'm not sure if you've been following the news, but Penn Crest is currently undergoing a lot of changes and a lot of those changes target and attack the LGBTQ+ community. So I bring this up to say, I moved to Erie after I met my wife and came out of the closet and was able to live authentically. And I found that the city itself was so accepting and opening. We know that the city has a perfect score on the 2022 Municipal Equality Index through the Human Rights Campaign. And I am so grateful to live here and to see the work that the city has done. I'm speaking, of course, I'm speaking in support of this ordinance. There are currently over 500 anti-LGBTQ+ bills moving through various state houses throughout the country. The Human Rights Campaign and the NAACP have declared states of emergency for LGBTQ+ people. What people are now experiencing is called stochastic terrorism. Like the Pulse shooting and the Department, and the Department of Homeland Security has declared the, this a national terrorism advisory for people in the LGBTQ+ community. So I should define, stochastic terrorism essentially is the act of always waiting to be attacked for some inalienable part of your identity. And that's kind of what LGBTQ+ people around the country are facing. Erie represents hope for so many. And this ordinance declaring the city welcoming could potentially allow us to get further services for this community that already reside in the city. Services for the trans community, for older queer Eriites, for people living with HIV and AIDS, and for people experiencing homelessness. Erie supports its queer citizens and could do that for people from all over the country. And we already do it for people in in our own backyard. My wife and I living here is an example of that. So I just wanted to thank you for your time today and support Councilwoman Faulkner. Thank you.
Thank you. And that's going to put a pause on the public comment because we have a public hearing that we are going to start at 9:30 on the dot. So if anyone is going to start that, please.
Madam Vice Chair, I can read the resolution. Council's here to hear testimony at the request of Attorney John Mehler to discuss the proposed transfer of the Pennsylvania liquor license number R21202 from Johnny B.'s Restaurant in Northeast to a location at 425 Peach Street, City of Erie. I think if anybody's going to offer testimony, we have to be sworn in.
If you are going to be offering testimony, please stand and raise your right hand, right?
Any testimony.
You're just being sworn in right now, okay? Okay, please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm, tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to the best of your ability here today?
I do.
Yes.
Okay, whenever you come to the podium, please state and spell your name for the record and provide an address as well, please. Okay, thank you.
Good morning. My name is John Mehler. My address, I'm sorry, M.E.H.L.E.R. I, my office address is 100 State Street, Erie, PA 16507. The, the request before you this morning is a fairly routine transfer of a liquor license. Some years ago, there were many liquor licenses available in the city of Erie. That's no longer the case as many of the convenience stores have gobbled them up. And so it has become harder and harder to identify and acquire real, or liquor licenses within the city. The request before you today involves Johnny B.'s Restaurant, which is out in Northeast. The owner of that establishment sold the property to a non-liquor license operator. No longer has the need for that license. And so it became available and my client, Fifth and Peach LLC, entered into a contract to acquire that liquor license. The contingency is that city council approves the transfer of that liquor license from Northeast Township to the city, which again is a requirement under the law. And it's a contingency to the completion of that contract. The liquor license would be located at the building kind of commonly referred to as the Wrap Building. It's down at Fifth and Peach. It's referred to as the Wrap Building. It's sort of L-shaped. It wraps around the parking structure that's there. This is part of the ongoing efforts to revitalize the central business district of the city of Erie. Most would say it's been largely successful, creating a lot of activity in an area which had historically not seen a whole lot. There's the food hall, stores and things like this. And this will contribute to the critical mass that's being developed there, again, in the central business district. Adjacent to this property at Fifth and State is the building, which will involve a number of apartments, and I believe those are coming online later this month. The apartments located in the Wrap Building, I think there will be about 32 of those on the upper floors. There will be three, currently plan three, commercial units on the ground floor. Discussions are underway with several proposed operators there, including the bottle shop that this license will serve. As currently envisioned, it will have a somewhat basic, limited food menu. The idea being that you can dine in or take your food and beverages out to go. They intend to showcase local beers and wines. And I think that's pretty much a summary. Be happy to try and answer any questions you might have.
Do we have a hope for when the project will be done?
It's a moving target, as I understand it. The hope was that the apartments would come online in September. But I, I think that's been. But I, I think that's been delayed with some supply chain type issues. Um, I don't have those details, or I'd be happy to share that with you. They, they're very anxious, of course, I think we all are, to see the completion of the construction so the fifth street opens up, we're not competing with the contractors for parking spaces and all that. But it's, it's really exciting to have the city of Erie busy uh and all those spots uh being used. So I don't know a firm timeline at this point.
Okay, I, I'd just like to anticipate the development that'll be occurring in the central of our city because things can get crazy with traffic, but thank you.
Yeah.
Um, quick question, and, and maybe you already covered this, but to your understanding, this establishment would be, would remain locally owned? It wouldn't become, say, a national chain or something that would operate a liquor license?
There's no plans for any chain or national or otherwise that it would be locally operated.
Okay, great, thank you.
I'd like to, to reserve just a minute to respond to any comments that are to the contrary, please. Thank you.
Alrighty, um is there anyone to speak regarding the public hearing? Can you please come forward to the podium?
Hi.
For or against?
Against.
Okay.
I'm br- oop, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry, if you're for the podium, please step forward. If you're not for, if you don't have any, if no one is gonna speak for it, can you then move on to if you are against the development? Now you can speak, please.
Um, I'm against the development, Bruce Kinsella, seven oh four West Core Road. Um, what, I'm not a lawyer, so let's get that out of the way. Uh, what he, what he didn't mention was, the convenience stores and grocery stores are buying up these licenses, and I get it. Okay, it's making it tougher to get the license. Erie has too many licenses already for our population, okay? So you could petition the state to get a new license, issued license, but we don't have the population for it. So he wants to bring a license in from the county into the city. I don't, I don't think that's right, okay? I think that um they are developing, developing a monopoly downtown, okay? They have, in the paper, one hundred and ten million dollars. Every other small business, of which my son has one, has struggled through this pandemic to the point where their checkbooks are barely balanced. And they got the one hundred and ten million dollars to spend on a liquor license, okay? The whole idea between their program was to get, we had enough restaurants and bars town down, right? We needed to bring shopping and businesses down to Erie. And all they're doing is bringing, they got the vodka place, they got the food court with the liquor license. They now they want another one, they're closing other businesses with liquor license so they can have their own liquor license. They're not gonna give this one up, all the other thing, they rent the businesses out to other people and stuff like this. But in the article, they wanna keep control of the liquor license. They want to control a nice big square block of downtown Erie, and I don't think it's right. I don't think it's fair to people that have sweat equity in their businesses for these people to come in, excuse me for the word "these people", to come in with money from outside interest, none of their own money, none of the, none personally earned, none of his money, okay? None of his sweat equity. But we're gonna have to compete with that? It just doesn't seem fair.
Thank you for your comment, sir.
Alright, thank you guys.
Alrighty, do we have anyone else who would like to speak? If there's no one else to speak or testify, we will move on. If there's, if council has any comments, now is the time. Does council have any comments? Alrighty, if there's anyone else to speak against the hearing, now is your time. Council doesn't have anything to speak, so we will now continue with the agenda. Alrighty, we're gonna close out the hearing now. Thank you. We are gonna continue with the public comment, so if you have any desire to speak, you have five minutes. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Samantha Smith and I reside at one nine one two West Thirty-third Street in Erie. Um, even though the Fourth of July was yesterday, happy Pride Month. Um, Stonewall was started in the last week of June, and it only grew stronger from there. And I think the same is true for right now in Erie. Uh, last month, the Blasco Library had a pride section. Um, not soon after the display was up, it was taken down, just after a few complaints. There was a sit-in at the library with the objective of getting the display back, and even though it was a sit-in, there was only standing room available. Um, the children's library was packed full of love and support from LGBTQIA community, family, and friends. Not pictured in the room were the hundreds of people signing a petition in support of the pride display. And with all this love and support, and with LGBTQIA and mostly trans legislation happening right now across the country, it's time to take larger protection, it's time to take larger action in protecting our rights. Erie is already known in the area for protecting people in the LGBTQIA plus community by putting into place the anti-discrimination laws for LGBTQIA plus folks looking for housing and work. We just received a perfect score in the municipa- wow, sorry, municipality equality index. And I think that Erie should be considered for a sanctuary city for LGBTQIA folks. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Raya Witheroe, uh I live at five twenty West Sixth Street, and I have been an Erie resident my entire life. I'm here to speak in favor of making Erie a sanctuary city for the LGBTQ community. I've been a queer person my entire life, so my hometown recognizing and taking part in LGBTQIA protection is very important to me. As a lifelong Erieite, I know firsthand the work that needs to be done here. I've been an active member in countless community outreach programs and protests for equality. The most recent being the read-in at the Blasco Library over the removal of a pride display, a moment that showed a lot of Erie's queer community that Erie might not be as welcoming as it claims. It implies that Erie is not welcoming to queer parents or children. I know that one of Erie's biggest exports is its people. We are raised to believe Erie was a city not worth being in, and leaving was the best option for a better life. I do not believe that. I believe Erie is worthy of building and nurturing. I believe that by voting to make Erie a LGBTQ sanctuary city, we can show our queer community that Erie is worthy of not only staying in, but building in and bettering, and even show those outside of our community that Erie is a safe haven for them to find a home in. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else for public comment?
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Carol Rogers and I live at thirteen sixty-five West Thirty-second Street in Erie. And um I don't want to try to um repeat any of the information given by our former very eloquent speakers. But I just want to speak to you um as a board member of the Greater Erie Alliance for Equality um whose mission is to um advocate uh for our um members of the LGBTQIA community um and in support of this ordinance to make Erie a sanctuary city. I also want to speak from the heart to let you know that my son and my granddaughter are both members of this community, and it's not an easy road to travel. And um, you know, with the um current climate in the nation, um things do get scarier by the day for them. So um I would just appreciate your consideration of the ordinance and um also, you know, keep in mind that our youth are just so valuable. And I, you know, commend all the young people that have spoken here today and want to just draw your attention to the fact that, you know, in the, especially in the trans community, the statistics are horrible. The statistics are eighty percent of our trans youth have considered suicide. About forty percent have actually attempted it. If there is anything that we can do to make those statistics better in our home, I really beseech you to try to do that for them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else?
Name and address, right? Um, my name is Joseph Lewick, I am uh, I live at sixteen ninety-six Treetop Drive. I am a trans woman here in Erie. And while unlike some people, I can't claim to have been an Erie lifer, I think for me that speaks to something else in that Erie, for me, was my sanctuary city. It is somewhere I was able to move, feel safe, and be comfortable in who I am. And I don't think enough people know that about Erie. I have, as somebody not born here, defended Erie multiple times because people not in this community may not be aware of how accepting Erie can be. And I think that moving on and making this place a sanctuary city for the LGBTQ plus community would really be us making our mark and saying, hey, we are safe and we want you guys to know that. Like, I think that's a great thing to say about Erie and let people know about us. And beyond that, like everybody else would say, it would be tremendously beneficial to our community.
Thank you for your time. Do we have anyone else who would like to speak for public comment? Do we have anyone else who would like to speak for public comment? Going for the last time, do we have anyone who would like to speak for public comment? Alrighty, well then we will move on to new business.
Ordinances for final passage. Council File Number sixteen three sixty, official ordinance thirty-five twenty twenty-three, an ordinance appropriating the sum of one million six hundred and three thousand five hundred and sixty-eight dollars from unappropriated and anticipated revenue and providing for the expenditure thereof. This is the PCCD, Pennsylvania Commission Crime Delinquency, L.L.A. support. Sponsored by Ms. Faulkner, seconded by Mr. Keys. The Council File Ordinance, Bill Number sixteen three sixty, and now known as Official File Ordinance thirty-five twenty twenty-three, be passed by City Council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Mr. Keys, Mr. Tru- Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Flores. City Council pass Official File Ordinance thirty-five twenty twenty-three by yea six, nay zero. Council File Number sixteen three sixty-one, official ordinance thirty-six twenty twenty-three, an ordinance closing and vacating a portion of an alley located adjacent to the downtown YMCA accessible from both West Tenth Street and West Eleventh Street. Sponsored by Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mr. Keys. The Council File Ordinance, Bill Number sixteen three sixty-one, and now known as Official File Ordinance thirty-six twenty twenty-three, be passed by City Council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Mr. Keys, Mr. Tru- Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Flores. City Council pass Official File Ordinance thirty-six twenty twenty-three by yea six, nay zero. Council File Number sixteen three sixty-two, official ordinance thirty-seven twenty twenty-three, an ordinance appropriating the sum of fifty thousand dollars from unappropriated and anticipated revenue and providing for the expenditure thereof. This is the Police Drug and Vice Program. Sponsored by Ms. Faulkner, seconded by Mr. Keys. The Council File Ordinance, Bill Number sixteen three sixty-two, and now known as Official File Ordinance thirty-seven twenty twenty-three, be finally passed by City Council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Mr. Keys, Mr. Tru- Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Flores. City Council pass Official File Ordinance thirty-seven twenty twenty-three by yea six, nay zero. Council File Number sixteen three sixty-three, official ordinance thirty-eight twenty twenty-three, an ordinance amending official ordinance number eighty twenty oh five, known as the zoning ordinance of the City of Erie, by changing the classification of the parcel eighteen fifty-one seventy-three one oh seven from C three, reserved for downtown central business district, only to C two, to correct the previous zoning error. Sponsored by Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Ms. Flores. The Council File Ordinance, Bill Number sixteen three sixty-three, and now, and now known as Official File Ordinance thirty-eight twenty twenty-three, be finally passed by City Council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Mr. Keys, Mr. Tru- Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Flores. City Council pass Official File Ordinance thirty-eight twenty twenty-three, finally by yea six, nay zero. Council File Number sixteen three sixty-four, official ordinance thirty-nine twenty twenty-three, an ordinance of, amending official ordinance eighty twenty oh five, known as the zoning ordinance of the City of Erie by changing the classification of property located south of East Thirty-third Street between McClellan Avenue and Bird Drive. Parcel numbers eighteen fifty-one seventy-three one oh three, eighteen fifty-one seventy-four one oh one, and eighteen fif- eighteen fifty-one seventy-four one oh two, from C two, general commercial to R one, low-density residential. Sponsored by Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Ms. Flores. The Council File Bill Number sixteen three sixty-four, and now known as Official File Ordinance thirty-nine twenty twenty-three, be finally passed by City Council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Mr. Keys, Mr. Tru- Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Flores. City Council pass Official File Ordinance thirty-nine twenty twenty-three, finally by yea six, nay zero. Okay, this takes us to ordinances for first reading. I'd like to point out that we have an ordinance on here, number sixteen three sixty-eight, um that we've already passed. So we're gonna pull that from the agenda and that'll also change our order of council file numbers.
Thank you.
Council File Number sixteen three sixty-five, an, an ordinance appropriating the sum of one million dollars from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof. Funds are granted from the Pennsylvania DCED Local Share Account for wastewater treatment plant disinfection systems improvement project. Sponsored by Mr. Keys, seconded by Mr. Tru. The Council File Ordinance Number sixteen three sixty-five, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Mr. Keys, Mr. Tru- Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Flores. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance sixteen three sixty-five by yea six, nay zero on first reading. Council File Number sixteen three sixty-six, an ordinance appropriating the sum of five hundred thousand dollars from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof. Funds are granted from the Pennsylvania DCED Local Share Account for Downtown State Street Traffic Pedestrian and Cyclist Improvement Project. Sponsored by Mr. Keys, seconded by Mr. Troup, the council file ordinance number sixteen three sixty-six, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by city council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troup, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Flores. City Council read and adopt council file ordinance sixteen three sixty-six by yea six, nay zero on first reading. Council File Number sixteen three sixty-seven, an ordinance appropriating the sum of five hundred thousand dollars from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof. Funds are granted from the Pennsylvania DCED Local Share Account for Multimodal Transportation Fund Program, State Street. Sponsored by Mr. Keys, seconded by Mr. Troup, the council file ordinance number sixteen three sixty-seven, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by city council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troup, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Flores. City Council read and adopt council file ordinance number sixteen three sixty-seven by yea six, nay zero on first reading. Council File Number sixteen three sixty-eight, an ordinance appropriating the sum of one hundred thousand dollars from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof. Funds are granted from the Pennsylvania DCED Local Share Account for Bomb Squad Response Vehicle. Sponsored by Mr. Keys, seconded by Mr. Troup, the council file ordinance number sixteen three sixty-nine, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by city council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troup, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Flores. City Council read and adopt council file ordinance number sixteen three sixty-nine by yea six, nay zero on first reading. Council File Number sixteen three sixty-nine, an ordinance appropriating the sum of two hundred and forty-five thousand from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received from the Commonwealth Pennsylvania Department of Transportation. The funds will be used to carry out the downtown Erie Active Transportation Project through the Transportation Alternative Set Aside, TA Set Aside Program. The funding will be used to add bike lanes, crosswalks, and a wayfinding signage system throughout the city's trail network. Sponsored by Mr. Troup, seconded by Ms. Flores, the council file number, ordinance number sixteen three seventy, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading, it's now three sixty-nine, on, hereby adopted on first reading by city council. Mr. Brzezinski.
No.
Ms. Faulkner, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troup, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Flores. City Council read and adopt council file ordinance number sixteen three sixty-nine by yea's five, nays one on first reading. Council File Number sixteen three seventy, an ordinance appropriating the sum of four hundred and fifty thousand from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof. Funds are granted from the Pennsylvania DCED Local Share Account for East Lake Road Reconstruction and Traffic Signal Replacement. Sponsored by Mr. Keys, seconded by Mr. Troup, the council file ordinance number sixteen three seventy, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by city council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troup, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Flores. City Council read and adopt council file ordinance sixteen three seventy by yea six, nay zero on first reading. Again, I will fix these numbers in the minutes because I think I still read them, some of them incorrectly. Madam Vice President, this takes us to new business.
Council, can I have a motion and a second to move the balance of the agenda?
So move, Madam President.
Second.
Thank you. Council, do we have any separations? Alrighty, since we have no separations, Lori, you are free to move on.
Okay, voting on moving the balance of the agenda, Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troup, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Flores. Okay, this takes us to committee reports.
Alrighty, we can start our committee reports from the left. Go ahead, Susanna.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I enjoy saying that. I want to go through my regular committee report and then also want to address some of the public comments from today. First of all, I want to say thank you to our fire department. Thank you firefighters for responding to so many extra calls over the holiday weekend. So thank you for all the service that they do. Also to our police department. Summer is very much here. The police department is now averaging about two hundred calls per day, which is really significant. So that's, yeah, thank you for their service. Fireworks on the third, I know so many of us enjoyed them. It was a great success. There was only one arrest for disorderly conduct, so hopefully next year we can get to zero, but I'd say that's pretty good. Shootings are down as well as gang-related activity after the FBI sweep of the Four Nation Gang. That is very significant. We were having an increasing number of shootings almost weekly. As public safety liaison, it is my job to review the weekly police statistics. And so there has only been, just from my quick review, only one shooting in the last three weeks, which hopefully we can get that to zero, but that is a significant improvement. Also, there were several overdose deaths tragically over the last two weeks. A reminder that help is out there. Nine eight eight is the National Mental Health and Substance Use Crisis Line, as well as the National Drug and Substance Use Hotline is eight six six two one zero one three oh three. They're, both are available twenty-four seven. Nine eight eight is the easiest one to remember, so just please remember that, share the word, spread the word about it. This is something that our community desperately needs more, more attention and care and awareness on. Lastly, I want to thank everyone who came to speak on current actions. Pride Month is, is meant to, of course, be a celebration. I, myself, was part of the sit-in at the library after the pride display was removed. Being a member of the LGBTQ+ community, that was a deep concern for myself, especially for the kids out in the community who very much need that visibility. And that's something that anchors them here and what, keeps them, keeps them here. So while June might be over, July is here, July is Disability Pride Month, so we continue on. I had the distinct honor of meeting with Governor Shapiro on Thursday. I was representing Erie at his pride reception. So I was down in Harrisburg and got to talk to Governor Shapiro about what it would be like for Erie, which is known throughout the region as well as throughout the state as a welcoming city, and what that would look like for Erie to be declared a sanctuary city for the LGBTQ+ community. The best thing we can do is to not solely be reactive to censorship, hate, intolerance. The best thing we can do is to be proactive. And as we heard, some of the rates of mental illness and suicide among especially our LGBTQ+ plus youth are so incredibly high, upwards of eighty percent of these kids are considering suicide. And so whatever we can do, given that we are already designated a welcoming city for new Americans and refugees, so I am working with various community leaders. I'm also trying to get in touch with the LG, the city's LGBTQ+ Advisory Council and working with others to finalize a series of ordinances to improve human rights for our LGBTQIA+ community. We really cannot wait for anything to escalate. The library situation was, was enough. And so I will be finalizing those, and I've been talking with, with President Nelson about the possibility of those for a couple of weeks now. And so I will be finalizing those, and I'm happy to report that Governor Shapiro said he would love to see Erie be declared the first sanctuary city for our community in the state. And so I'm hoping we can get that passed and maybe even invite him up here to celebrate. So, thank you.
Can you tell me the date of, well, the time and the date for the committee reporting on the renters' quality? Because I know that you're, there's a date coming up for a study session.
Is that the July nineteenth at one?
July.
Yes. So yes, also working on some housing ordinances to better protect renters and to better prevent homelessness. Really happy to see everything the mayor's administration is doing to address and serve our unhoused community. And I'm looking at when do, what is the point when folks become unhoused and become homeless? So we'll be having a housing subcommittee study session, which is open to the public on Wednesday, July nineteenth at one PM. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Troup?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. First of all, I'd like to say you did a great job today, so.
Thank you.
Both before the meeting and, and conducting the business, so thank you for your professionalism. Just want to say thanks to the city for the great fireworks display. I did go down and check it out. People were really thankful for that, and hopefully that continues. And just happy for, continue in your celebrations and things like that. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Mel?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I'll echo Councilman Troup. Excellent job today.
Thank you.
Just a brief report on the Biddy Basketball Camp. It was very, very successful. I sent some pictures to Chris in the mayor's office, and hopefully some of them will be on the website. We had a young man who worked real hard, tried his best, and he received the Heart of a Lion Award. And he was very, very grateful at such a young age. The mayor was there, as usual. He signed four basketballs that we give to kids who did something special in the camp. Police department was present, and the fire department was present. I thought the kids would like the fire truck, but they liked the dog more. But they did a fun, that's always added attraction to the Biddy Camp. Tonight is the first night of the Basketball League. It begins at five-thirty with the nine-to-ten-year-olds. We have a hundred and eighty-one participants, and we're still looking for a few coaches. The numbers for Bayview Park is increasing, and we will be able to run the program at Bayview Park. We also plan to have onsite registration at Bayview Park as well. Thank you, Madam Pres.
Thank you.
Vice President.
Councilman Brzezinski? Or, yeah.
You can lick him.
No. However you want to go.
Go ahead.
I'd just like to hope everyone enjoyed their holiday and, in a contextual way, understanding the meaning of independence. And I don't have any, an official report today. We will be on that subcommittee meeting with Ms. Faulkner about housing, and that's all.
Thank you, Councilman Keys. Councilman Brzezinski?
Thank you. And I'm with the other guys. Great job.
Thank you.
Great job. It's not that easy, huh?
It's a lot to remember.
You did it very good. Anyway, I do have a few things. In caucus, I commented and thanked Mr. Flowers for one heck of a great article on our Police Athletic League, Lieutenant Lennox and the guys that put that together. There's countless hours of volunteer time in there, and the kids are responding to it more and more so. And it's, they're doing some real nice things, and it's, it's good that we got some wonderful press about it. That being said, moving on, the Port Authority made a big addition to their staff on June twenty-eighth. They hired Julie Slomsky, who is, well, she's still a county clerk right now, but she's biding her time. She will become the Assistant Executive Director, which can be very valuable to the port because she brings in an expertise of living in the city and, you know, being a part of it and understanding all the ins and outs of that whole area. So folks voted unanimously for her quietly and surprisingly was well-done, and I think she'll do a great job. I have a couple of things. Fireworks were very interesting. Well, I have to thank the folks, all of our citizens. I understand one, one person was arrested for disorderly conduct, but the amount of people that were there, it took me an hour to get out of my parking spot just to get up to the Metro Parkway, but it was worth it. Now fireworks is still the neatest thing that, that we have going, and it brings everybody, you see the little kids going, ooh, ah, and it just makes your heart feel good. An amazing thing happened to me. Sitting home, and once in a while I, I get a thought, and I'm thinking, you know, the mayor pulled out his trolley and helped older folks get to the Poles. So I'm thinking, we've got some older folks over on the west side that can't get to their Tops market anymore. So I made a call to Mr. Peterson, Jeremy, and he outdid me. I was just thinking, maybe, you know, one day a week, we'll do a trolley. I think it's the nineteenth, yeah, the nineteenth, they're going to do a test run, and they're going to start, I believe, we don't have the whole map mapped out, but over Eighteenth Street, and they're going to clean that area. I watched people, summer and winter, walking up Cranberry, going to Tops, and walking back home. So many of those folks depended on walking, and you don't walk to Thirty-Eighth Street. So again, hats off to Jeremy for jumping on it right away. And I'm not sure, senior citizens get free bus transportation?
They do get discount, I think after sixty-four or sixty-five. They just have to take their identification down to the EMT, and they get like a special senior pass.
Sort of thought. If not, I might be asking Ms. Renee to find a little bit of money to make sure that this program keeps on going. I also talked, there it is, thank you, sir. I talked to the Reverend, Mr. Brock, telling him that I didn't forget the east side, but we're going to go slowly. We're going to do a, a two-month practice run on the west side to make sure that we're hitting the folks that need, need to be helped. And hopefully it'll be a successful type of situation. The majority of the folks getting on that bus will probably be senior citizens. So I don't think that the money thing is going to be much of a, we can't, we can't advertise free bussing, because if we did that, then we have to give it to everybody. But we can help those folks who don't have the buck sixty-five or whatever it might be for the round trip. I'm excited about it. It's, you know, it started way back when we knocked down Roosevelt and the new folks moved in there. They put a fence up, and the folks were walking in the street. So again, I got some calls, so we checked into it. And they put a fence up because they were restructuring a whole area. They were rebuilding the sidewalk. I talked to them, I don't think it was two weeks, and they had the whole run the sidewalk in there. They took the fence down, and the people could walk on the sidewalk instead of dodging cars on the street. Now they don't have to walk. They're, you know, I also spoke to Mr. Sheen, who's the manager of the Tops on Thirty-Eighth Street, and he thought he was doing a great job. He has a white panel van situated at the old Tops, for anybody who wants to check that out, and they will give them. that out, and they will give them rides back and forth. Uh, our bus route would get the folks closer to their homes, which, when they're carrying, uh, carrying food and milk and things like that, uh, occasional beer maybe, but anyway, uh, I'm excited about it, and I'm hoping that the people will jump on it. Our job is to make sure that the people know about it, and we'll keep on talking. Thank you very much, and, uh, like I said, Fourth of July was a wonderful, wonderful occasion, actually the third. Uh, fireworks, fantastic. Uh, a tribute to the guys, our Glenn was one of the guys on, on duty, uh, down at the Port Authority area, and you wouldn't believe the cars, and, like I said, we left a little bit early, and it took me an hour to get that one block up there, because emptying all the parking, but it was worth it, everybody was happy, people were smiling, I didn't see, you know, one, one disgruntled guy, for some reason he came in and he parked facing the bay, and then he couldn't turn the car around, so you had to wait for everybody to, to get out of the parking area before he could get out. Anyway, it's Erie and we have a wonderful city, and I'm glad to see so many folks. Uh, don't forget the Sea Wolves, that was a pretty neat thing, too.
Yep.
I'm done. Thank you.
Yes, we have beautiful summers, so we definitely have to appreciate and enjoy them. Um, I would like to, you know, reiterate of the great turnout that we had for the Pride Festival, and then also for the Fourth of July celebration on the third. We also have more summer events coming up, but those are, um, going to be later on in the month, so we can report those on the next city council meeting. We have a I T and Communication Committee meeting tomorrow scheduled at five thirty. It is going to be a reporting on the citywide fiber and the broadband coverage that has gone on in the last year. We had our original meeting about a year ago, and we're just going over any updates and any coverage that the community might not be aware they now have in their neighborhoods, so that'll be nice to know. We also have the committee report, well, the committee meeting that is coming up on July nineteenth at one, that Councilmember Faulkner had, uh, mentioned, and then we did have a E M T A public meeting last week, which the C E O of the E M T A did discuss the grocery connector that they are implementing, that was implemented on July fifteenth, it's Route Thirtieth, it's going to be transporting people from the West Twenty-Sixth location to the Thirty-Eighth Street location, so that people can still access, um, groceries with Erie's, um, food desert footprint growing, we want to continuously try to address the need for food and groceries. We have a large community who is elderly and disabled, and it is hard for them to get their groceries, and with us not being as accessible as we would hope to be, we have a lot of work to do, but we are trying to slowly correct the issues that we are facing. The next E M T A meeting will be held on July twenty-fourth at four P M, those are open to the public, so if you have concerns or things that you've noticed the buses not adequately addressing, I definitely recommend that you start participating in that meeting, um, as well. I am the liaison for city council for the E M T A, and there's lots of input and feedback that goes on between those public meetings. That is all I have to report, I just want to continue to state that Erie's beautiful in the summer, we have a job to make sure that we're keeping our community clean and free of litter, with our lake being so dear and near to our city border, we need to make sure that we're doing everything to keep our fresh water of quality. Thank you. Alrighty, I think we're going to move on to reports of the mayor, and Teresa, nothing. Solicitor, nothing. The mayor, Renee?
Actually, I do.
Okay. Whip that back.
The, the gentleman, uh, Mr. Harris, that spoke, uh, at council, the property, he identified as four thirty-five East Twenty-Eighth Street, that property is not on the repository list, it is owned by the Erie Redevelopment Authority, they acquired the property, um, in the last year.
Okay.
The other property is located in Harbor Creek and is not, uh, on the repository list. Well, we don't have an address, but it doesn't appear to be on the repository list, but even if it were, it's not within the authority of this city council to do anything.
Thank you for that report, Ed.
That's okay. Good morning. Um, just a few things, um, I noticed, um, in the, uh, ordinances for first reading, number five, uh, the bomb squad regional response vehicle, the, um, L S A grant that we got from the Commonwealth Financing Authority should be three hundred and twenty-five thousand, so we'll fix that on the next agenda. Um, also, uh, I'm, I'm the liaison to the mayor's LGBTQ advisory council, so I can connect you with, um, the members of that group. I want to, um, reiterate, um, regarding the fireworks and thank all of the community partners that stepped, stepped up, I don't think anybody really, um, imagines the, the logistical undertaking it is to pull off a fifteen-minute, well, seventeen-minute, uh, fireworks show, but, um, we wanna thank our, our partners, of course, CAFE, which is Cultures, Arts, Festivals, and Events of Erie that raised all the funding, uh, Port Authority, which was our partner in that, um, E C R A, Erie County Gaming and Revenue Authority, E M T A, which offered free shuttle service, and the Parking Authority, which offered free parking in the ramps, um, and then, police, fire, uh, Public Works, everybody from the Parks Department and the Streets Department, the Erie Downtown Partnership. Um, it was a, it was a, it was a team effort, and, um, it's just, it's a wonderful thing to be a part of. And then, I also wanted to mention, uh, that before our next, next council meeting, so the, the weeks, the six weeks between, uh, when the fireworks kick off and celebrate Erie, we have the, uh, eight-one-four concert series, uh, in six, uh, parks throughout the urban core, and then also, uh, six, um, summers, summer concerts, um, at the senior, it's with the senior living centers. Um, and so, July ninth, we kick off, um, on Sunday at Washington Park, um, at four P M, there will be a drum circle with One World Tribe, and then, um, let's see, Steve Trejoski's Bases Loaded will play at six o'clock. On July tenth, at seven P M, uh, at Mercy Terrace, um, let's see, the rooftop, where's that, Rooftop Project will play. And then, on Sunday, July sixteenth, at four P M, in Wayne Park, there will also be a health fair going on there, in Wayne Park, um, at East Sixth and East Avenue. We have, again, the drum circle at four o'clock, followed by Mambo at six. And then, on the seventeenth, we'll be at the Regency at South Shore with Tennessee Back Porch, and those will continue every Sunday and Monday, um, until Celebrate Erie, those are posted on, uh, the CAFE website. And that's all I have for today.
Alrighty, thank you. I believe that brings us to the end of the meeting, so I'm going to adjourn the meeting. Everybody else have a great Wednesday.
City council adjourns at ten twenty-one A M. Ms. Flores, Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Mr. Keyes, Mr. Trup, Mr. Witherspoon.